Go ahead and take roll.
Walters?
Here.
Dvorak said he would be absent tonight. He apologizes. Vogel?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Start chat.
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I do have one correction on consent agenda, item six U. We're going to delete that item. Other than that, I have no additions or corrections, and I would take a motion, please.
Mayor, are we deleting that item, or are we moving that to new business?
Ah, sorry. I thought we were taking it off. Maybe I misunderstood. So it's probably my fault. Um. Hey, we're moving it to business item. My fault. I misunderstood the message. Sorry. We're moving six U to business item H. How's that?
That works.
All right. That's all I have. Now I need a motion.
I would like to, uh, talk about, at least talk about, our.
Let's pull that when we get to consent, Ron. Let's just go ahead and approve the agenda, and we'll do our presentation, and then we'll move to that. So.
Very good.
We get a motion on the approval of the agenda with the moving of six U to seven H.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Start chat.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is presentation from Central Iowa Water Trails, and I'm not certain who's here, so I'll let you speak up and go for it.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. Thanks so much for having us tonight. My name is Maggie McClelland. I am the project manager for Central Iowa Water Trails, and I'm joined tonight by Nikki Severson with Isaacson Severson Consulting, who has been one of our consultants working on our governance process for water trails. And we appreciate the opportunity to join you all tonight, to fill you in a little bit, not only on the project, but to give you an update on what has been happening over the last several months in regards to our governance structure for water trails. So to kick us off, I'm going to take us all the way back to the beginning to kind of get us all on the same page about how all of this got to be started. And that was back in 2016, when the MPO adopted a regional water trails plan that then led to an engineering study to determine how we could use conservation and recreation efforts to activate our waterways for residents and visitors. The study identified eighty-six amenities over a hundred and fifty miles throughout our three county region, which you'll see up on the screen currently. And those amenities are varying levels. Some are as simple as creating a pathway for fishing and wading, and others are as large and complex as whitewater rafting. Beginning in 2016 and continuing through today, this effort has really been a collaborative community effort with input at dozens of discussion groups, town halls, presentations, and throughout every step of the process, there's been participation from elected officials, city staff, a multitude of community groups, and interested residents. And through each of these conversations, the vision has been pretty clear for us in that we have an opportunity to activate our waterways as a regional amenity to improve our environment, enhance quality of life, spur economic development, and attract visitors and workforce. So why is this project important today, you know, given everything that cities are confronted with right now? And I think a key example of what this can do for the region and the importance of providing recreational opportunities for locals, especially keeping with the momentum of newfound appreciation of the outdoors, that's probably been the only good product of the pandemic, is really our paved bike trails. We see a huge increase in usage numbers of our trails, but what we lack there is the regional draw in terms of workforce and tourism attraction. It's important that we keep that cohesiveness of the paved trails. Excuse me. It's important that we keep that cohesiveness paved trails may be lacking to create the universal user experience for residents and visitors alike, especially given that, you know, water trails is moving water. We need to be very conscientious of that. In addition, we must be thinking about consistent, long-term maintenance, which Nikki's going to get into here in just a little bit when she speaks to the role of the governing entity. So what are the benefits to individual cities, in particular Polk City? So first, these are the overarching goals of Central Iowa Water Trails and how these will benefit everybody in the region. Of course, first and foremost, we have safety. That's our top priority for water trails. You know, there's the educational piece to it of providing education to allow users to safely recreate in our waterways. And then it's also providing the access into and out of the water safely as well. We don't have the rocky shorelines like you might find in Colorado where it's easy access at any point along the waterways. And so with this project, we're creating those access points. We have economic development and attracting workforce and tourism, which will, of course, be priorities for us here as we phase into pandemic recovery. Environmental conservation. All eighty-six projects within Water Trails have some sort of component of environmental conservation or water quality to them. And then kind of no-brainer here is outdoor recreation, providing those dedicated space for outdoor recreation on our waterways. So when looking at the benefits to your residents in particular, there's several. First of which would be more amenities that your residents can take advantage of in the surrounding area with improvements plans even within your own backyard at Sailorville Lake. So there's currently three planned projects in near or around Sailorville Lake that are actually at the jurisdiction of Polk County, but certainly projects that you are probably interested to know about. So Nikki, if I'll have you go to the next slide to give a listing of what those projects are. So first, you'll see the first project that's planned for upstream of Sailorville along Highway seventeen. And if you're familiar with, this location serves as a point for paddlers to exit the river before reaching an area that's difficult to navigate because of excessive sedimentation. And so the primary purpose of this location is, of course, safety and reducing the number of emergency responses due to stranded paddlers. We have the next site that is located near the Polk City Sports Complex at Sailorville Lake, and then a third that's located within Cottonwood Recreation Area. So if you go back to the last slide, Nikki. So another benefit to your residents is not only access to the projects near Polk City, but also those in the surrounding area, having access to different experiences in the region. So of course, we have the downtown Des Moines sites that we hear a lot about with those whitewater features, but also having the amenities in West Des Moines or Johnston, allowing central Iowans to kind of explore the various areas and neighborhoods within central Iowa. Of course, we have enhanced quality of life, providing these additional amenities for your residents. And then also, when looking at visitors, through some studies that we've conducted, we've noticed that visitors stay for an average of three days to experience a variety of amenities in the region. So let's say a family comes into town with the intention of visiting the downtown sites, but they'll do that for a day, and then they'll look for other opportunities and other attractions to explore here in the area such as Sailorville Lake on the other days that they're here in town. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nikki, who will get into the specifics, as I said, of our governance process and our structure for water trails. Nikki, I'll let you take the floor.
All right. Thank you, Maggie, and thank you again for having us tonight. I just want to walk you through the process of how we got to where we are right now. So building off the momentum of the engineering study, an interim LLC and leadership board was formed to guide the Capitol campaign and help the creation of this structure. From there, the Central Iowa Water Trails engaged national parks and recreation experts to determine what is the best long-term operating governance structure for a system like this. There's nothing like this in Iowa or the nation, to be honest. And so we wanted to see, based on Iowa values and what we've learned from and other regional entities, what's the best long-term structure? So those individuals conducted interviews, surveys, and small discussion groups with regional mayors and city managers. Based on that feedback and research, they recommended a nonprofit conservancy model with public partners, and they had a strong emphasis on a public-private funding mix. So from there, I was brought on board along with Scott Racker with the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center at Drake. And we had individual interviews with regional city managers and supervisors just to understand, here's what was, you know, proposed. How are we going to put this into action? We conducted focus groups with the private sector. They've been incredibly supportive throughout the Capitol campaign and wanted to make sure that they'd still be alongside us for the long-term sustainability of this, of the water trails. And then we conducted facilitated sessions from September through December of last year, which Chelsea was engaged in a number of those. And the other step is informing our elected officials, and that's what we're here for tonight. This won't be the only time they'll have a chance to talk with us, but we want to make sure that throughout this process, we're really building something that works for everyone in the region. So that working group, we're charged with a couple of things. That was made up of city managers, county supervisors and representatives, as well as the DNR and Conservation Board reps. They were charged with helping with the organizational documents and the governing structure. And we are going to walk you through where we are in that process right now. So first, just to kind of take a step back, this is a complicated thing. So how it all fits together? Central Iowa Water Trails, as Maggie mentioned, eighty-six amenities through twelve cities and three counties. There are regional sites, eighty-one of them throughout the region that are owned and maintained by each jurisdiction, plus the downtown sites, which are five access points in or near downtown. The ownership of those is still being worked through. And then there's this new nonprofit that we're going to talk about that will oversee the regional network. In terms of funding, and we'll talk in more specifics in a moment, the regional sites will be maintained by each jurisdiction. And the sites that Maggie mentioned are actually within Polk County's jurisdiction. And so there's not that maintenance by Polk City, but they are so close, and your residents benefit from all of these, which is why we want to share that with you. The downtown sites has a business pro forma that shows that it is a self-sustaining model with revenues going back to the region. The nonprofit will oversee regional operations, and we'll have an administrative budget as well, looking at things such as marketing, water safety, water monitoring, and overall making sure the network is flowing properly. And then the jurisdiction support, which will help with that nonprofit budget. So when we brought the working group of city managers and county representatives together last year, the first thing that we determined was what is the role of this regional entity? And so first and foremost, this new nonprofit will ensure that we have a network of water trails that's seamless and cohesive, and that includes design standards, signage, public art, maintenance operations. So no matter where your residents are getting in throughout the system, that it's cohesive and seems part of one. They'll oversee the public education and notification. We know how important water safety is. And when Polk City residents partake in this, we want to make sure that they are safe, and they know when is a good time to be in the water, and when is a time that they might want to rethink that trip. There'll be marketing events. They'll act as a single point of contact for the DNR. And then, of course, an independent audit and report back to jurisdictions on route water trails, maintenance, and approving the budget, collecting revenue. The group also went through just general terms and agreements with the twenty-eight E. And the twenty-eight E that is drafted right now is just for those organizations that have an actual site within their jurisdiction. And so this wouldn't necessarily apply to Polk City, but again, want to make sure that you are aware of how that works. Again, they confirmed that the water trail projects are owned by the jurisdiction and that liability is under the jurisdiction and covered under Iowa code. They came to terms with maintenance and standards. Again, so no matter where you are on the trails, you'll see consistency, and we came to terms on how that looks with the off-water maintenance, as well as making sure that when these sites are created and designed, that inclusion is a part of that, and that emergency response will be addressed within statewide mutual aid compact. Now, funding, we want to make sure that you're aware of how this works. There's the operation and maintenance of the downtown sites with their estimated pro forma, and then the estimated budget for admin. And again, when we're looking at what we're asking the jurisdictions to be a part of with this regional network, that operations and administrative budget includes things like marketing, the public education and notification, the water safety, water monitoring, and then other administrative costs. What we're looking at there is that that budget will be split seventy percent by jurisdictions and thirty percent by private fundraising support, and we'll show you how we got to that. With downtown, before we even started the Capitol campaign, we wanted to make sure that this would, you know, be able to be self-sustaining. And so we had national consultants run the numbers as far as visitors within a four-hour range and estimated costs of what it would, what the fees would be to use the downtown sites. Again, throughout the whole region, most of the sites will be completely complimentary, but with the whitewater component, there is equipment rental and the equipment fees there. What we see when it's all up and running, all five downtown sites, what we're calling the downtown run, the first year, there'll be a net revenue of twenty-three thousand, increasing pretty exponentially over the five years as it gets up and running, and then to over two hundred thousand dollars in year five. These are very conservative estimates, and the community in Michigan that was used as an example for tourism draw and kind of size of community has seen that they've met their pro forma estimates every year but one. Then with those revenue proceeds, half of that will go back into a maintenance endowment, and the other half will be reinvested in the region. Looking at the new nonprofit, we had the Water Trails team estimate an operating budget over the next three years. The first year, we're looking at a budget of about one point one, and then going up a little bit in year two, and then coming down as everything's on site and all of the water monitoring is in place, all of those systems are in place. And then also, when downtown is operational and can help support that as well. So what we're looking at when we're looking at the jurisdiction support is seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for this next fiscal year, beginning in July. For the cities that have access points, the funding formula was based on three weighted factors. That's drainage area at twenty-five percent, access points at twenty-five percent, and then population at fifty. You can see here how that's broken down. All of the communities kind of above that seven eighty-six number are those cities where the funding formula applies to them. Recognizing that a number of cities like Polk City can see the regional benefits and might like to have a voice and a seat at the table, knowing how much this will benefit your residents, there's a kind of a flat buy-in, if you will, of five thousand dollars. And so this is something for you to consider and that would support the region. And I'll just talk in a moment about how that would be impacted by representation on the board. So our next steps with the twenty-eight E, kind of that management agreement, we're talking to every jurisdiction in your council meetings, like we are with you tonight, asking those cities and counties who have those sites to review the twenty-eight E with legal departments. It'll be a separate agreement with our partner cities like Waukees, Norwalk, and Polk City, should you decide to join in, and then having those agreements signed this summer. So before we get into the governance, I'll pause here and see if you have any questions about the management agreement. Okay, and this isn't your only opportunity. Let's talk about where we are with the governing structure. The working group came to consensus on all of the items that we shared with you just now. We are still working through the process with the Governance Committee and the working group on the actual bylaws for this organization and what that governance looks like. What we do know is that there'll be three-year terms that will be staggered initially, no more than thirty members, because I think we can agree that's large enough, and that the representation will reflect the funding mix. And so that's seventy percent public officials and thirty percent private. Our jurisdiction representatives will be appointed by the mayor and will be elected officials. And then there'll be Board of Supervisors in those county positions. And then private representatives will be initially nominated by the Central Iowa Water Trails Executive Committee. The board composition, there'll be one representative from each city with an access point, plus one collective representative from our partner cities who choose to sign on. And so that is if Polk City, Norwalk, Waukees, all are a part of this network. I think we've already heard from Norwalk that they're in. There'll be one collective representative that will rotate each year. And so that's how that would work. We'll have two representatives from Polk County and one each from Dallas and Warren. If you look back at that map, the majority of the eighty-six amenities are all within Polk County. We'll have someone from Polk County Conservation, seven community leaders, and then non-voting representatives from the Great Outdoors Foundation and the DNR. Those private representatives will be seven community leaders that reflect the private sector funding mix and an inclusive voice of the regional network. They'll be nominated by the Executive Committee, and consideration will be given to those who reflect the private funding mix, water trails user groups, and also diverse communities. Those individuals will reside or work in Polk, Warren, or Dallas Counties. The Executive Committee is what we're working through right now. We do know the Executive Committee will have representatives as the four officers, as well as the standing committee chairs, and those standing committees are finance, operations and maintenance, inclusion, environmental conservation and safety, and then the GOF representative, who will be non-voting and not holding an office, but still have that voice, because we will have a lot of shared administration with Great Outdoors Foundation to make sure that we're streamlining costs. So our next steps here is after we've talked with all of our regional councils, we're making adjustments to that board composition based on your feedback. The Governance Committee is going to meet, finalize the structure. Then we're bringing that working group back together at the end of April, and the board will begin regular meetings in July of 2021, which is right around the corner. So with that, we would welcome any questions on how this relates to the region as well as the benefits to your Polk City residents.
Thank you both for going through that. And what sort of timeframe are you guys looking for in terms of the decision? I'm sorry if I missed that somewhere in the packet, but.
No, thank you. We are hoping to have an idea of where communities are at as far as participation in the month of April. We know we just threw a lot of information at you right now, but would like to have an indicator of, you know, what you're thinking, what are some sticking points over the next month? And then we would like to have everyone begin meeting and have this board fully formed for July. So we realize that's, time's ticking, and it's getting closer and closer as we move along.
Yeah, so that helps. I think it's definitely something for us to talk about and appreciate you taking the time to come out to kind of smaller fringe communities, and I say that with all due respect to the other groups, because I know that, you know, for me, it's, I really appreciate the collective effort on audacious goals like this. And, you know, that instinct in me wants to be a part of something like that. I do have to reconcile that, and we're talking about, you know, for us, five thousand dollars and a commitment of some time, but, you know, committing to, to an effort that is, you know, I would say wholly outside of our community, although I, you know, do recognize that we're a part of a metro, and, you know, there is unquestionably a benefit to what you guys are doing. So I think that's the discussion. I know we had it at a certain level with the study early on and then the involvement going ahead. So I definitely, again, appreciate how this is structured in terms of, you know, big audacious projects and goals don't happen unless they have broad support, unless they have broad resources, unless they have, you know, skilled people like you two on this. And I think that's good to, you know, like to also see in public-private partnerships. So definitely something that we need to have some discussion around and definitely want to be involved in some things to what end, at least in just from my perspective. But, but good stuff. This is exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. It's one of those things. When I very first heard of the concept, it was like, yeah, that'd be cool, but that's a pretty big thing to make happen. So, yes, thank you to you guys and everyone else that's been involved in this, because I think it will be a really amazing thing for the metro area. I would say as far as Polk City goes, yeah, you're right, we don't have the direct, but we're pretty close tangents to some of these. So I think Bridget is on the call, but what I would want us to consider as we're looking, you know, at this from our perspective, is what will this mean for our businesses here in town? You know, if we've got an access point at a complex, I mean, that's not necessarily our jurisdiction, but, you know, naturally, people will, you know, stop at Fairway, they'll stop at Papa's, you know, there will be that economic benefit that we will get back out of it. So I would, I would look to our economic development group to kind of help us understand what that would really mean for Polk City as we make the decision. But I think there's definitely a good opportunity for us to consider.
And Maggie said this earlier in our presentation, but I will reiterate it. Our studies show that when visitors come, they stay for three days. And so they're going to experience a number of amenities in the region, and it's only natural that they will be at Sailorville Lake and Big Creek Lake, and like you said, stopping there in the square. So they, we see this really as a regional benefit and a draw, not just to a specific site, but to the region as a whole.
Well, I would like to echo what everybody else said and say thank you for including us and being a part of this. The Des Moines River and now Sailorville Lake has always been a big part of Polk City. It's been kind of a meeting place over the years for different citizens, and I think it's great to be included and a big undertaking, and I think it's well worthwhile. So thank you.
How long do you think your governance will stay in place? Do you have a sunset for it?
That we are looking at in perpetuity. And so that's the reason why we're putting so much thought into this and having so many regional meetings is because we want to do this right, and we want this to work for the long term. I will, even before I was a consultant with this project back when I was with Capitol Crossroads, we were talking about the governance. And so this has been a couple of years in the making to make sure we get it right. When you think about our regional entities and regional projects, this is our chance to build something that works for the long term from the ground up. And so that's really what we're trying to do is learn from our other entities, learn from best practices across the nation, and make this the right long-term structure for the rest of the water trails.
Does anybody have anything else for these guys? If not, thank you guys for your presentation tonight. It was well put together, very informative. I learned a lot myself. So thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
And I think Chelsea's got our information. If there are any additional questions or feedback and thoughts from Polk City, send those our way, and we're happy to address any additional questions offline if you have time tonight.
Will do. Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Moving on, next item, public comments. This is time and place for comments for any item of those that are a public hearing. I'll ask the clerk if anyone has submitted and is on the phone.
Yes, sir. I have two residents that wish to address the council in addition to the written comments that I already forwarded you. Michelle Cook first. Michelle, you can address the council. Please address your, or please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Michelle Cook, eleven oh six Tradition Drive in Polk City is where I live, and my husband Howard is online. The Plenary and Zoning Commission has made a recommendation to move forward to City Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission has made a recommendation to move forward to city council approval for the. Approval of the amendment of the TCI Master Plan, parcel three, I think it is. So we all know it is the land in front of the hotel. Tonight, the proposal to recommend that the site plan and the builder's building. Plan, I think it is, be approved failed fortunately. So there appears to be some conflict with the Planning and Zoning Commission on this. I'm going to tell you the neighborhood is up in arms around this. I look to our government to be. Competent and very thoughtful and very considerate of the residents. When something is proposed. In this case, not only me, but I can tell you. Every single resident on Boulder Drive and on Tradition Drive is, we're kind of scratching our heads as to what's really taking place. I am, I am, along with other neighbors, I don't want to speak for anybody and just tell you what I know. Very much opposed to. Approving this amendment for entry level by a townhome. And we can talk about the style and all that. That's really not the issue. The issue is. Is the price point buyer and the fact that this developer has been working on a plan. Which he knows is not going to work. His wife is a real estate agent. My wife is in real estate. To put up a townhome, a buy at townhome targeting a first-time homebuyer. And then just walk away from the project with no managing homeowners association. Will not work. That buyer does not have the funds to replace this. Nobody will ever agree to maintain. So I think that we all need to be concerned, the city, the residents, we have to be concerned about the long-term maintenance of this. Of these buildings once they get up. What type of demographics are we attracting and are they going to be contributing members to our community? Are they going to be contributing in a positive way to our community? I'm concerned about the safety of our neighborhood. I'm concerned that this project will eventually not in very, not very long from now. Become a very low rent district. I'm concerned about the drain of the police department and the fact that crime will increase. I also want to say that a first-time homebuyer who can afford a two hundred fifty thousand dollar townhome, which is what Jared has said he's targeting. They do not have the budget to pay for a monthly HOA association fee. That's why this project will fail if we're looking. For Polk City to have. Integrity, you know, for the, I'm just concerned about the long-term future of conformity, of paint color, roofing style. Just general overall covenant. I can also tell you. It will be tough for people who are thinking ahead to even to find a buyer. If they're thinking about future investments, there's no buyer that's one of wondering, that's two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the townhome community. That has no managing HOA to protect their investment because it's a neighbor next door, just absolutely doesn't care. Everyone suffers. So speaking of suffering, if this project moves forward, I beg of you, city council, I beg of you, if this gets to you. You cannot approve this. You've got twenty-eight or so, I'm not sure how many of us are here in Tradition Drive and on Boulder. But we're talking about potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars of lost home value. We are going to flee Polk City and go elsewhere. I, I think we all contribute in very positive ways to our community and we'd love to continue to do that. So that's my comment. I also want to address just really quick. The garden villas that the developer has kind of insinuated, don't work there. The math does work. It's just a matter of whether or not the developer wants it to work. Maybe he can't turn his greater profit or not. But there is a great spot there. There's a great project that will enhance the community, enhance the golf course, enhance. Tradition Drive and all the TCI neighborhoods, which are, by the way, one of Des Moines' premier neighborhoods.
Michelle, not to totally cut you off, but we've hit your five-minute mark. So is there anything else?
We've hit the five-minute mark.
Okay, thank you for your time. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Jenny, is there anybody else on the call who wishes to be heard?
Yes, Kevin Elsbury. You are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Kevin Elsbury. I live at one zero zero one Tradition Drive.
You may address the commission or the council, excuse me.
Yes, thank you, mayor and city council. I just wanted to reiterate what Michelle has already mentioned. You know, my wife and I moved here three years ago and the reason we chose Polk City was because of this neighborhood that we live in. You know, this is the TCI community, the new development which is being composed. Truly does not fit with the TCI community. You know, really everything that. Everything that is that within TCI that is north of Broadway. Pretty much encompasses the TCI community and for this to be approved would be, I feel, would be a big mistake. I think it's something that would impact Polk City for centuries to come. As you look in terms of the neighborhoods and what a neighborhood makeup is. So I would just ask that the mayor and the city council. Please don't move forward with this proposal. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Jenny, is there anybody else on the call?
No, sir.
Thank you. Onto item six, consent agenda. Ron, did you say you had something there?
Yes, I would like to discuss R.
Okay, do you want us to pull that or you, if we want to discuss it, let's pull it and then well, let's go ahead and. Proceed with the consent agenda and then we can pull six R.
Very good. Thank you.
Take a motion, please. Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. And then I've got a couple of quick comments. I don't want to pull anything, but. Can I go now, Jason? You want me to wait a little bit?
Go ahead. No, go ahead. We got a second, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
My second. So. So two things, you know, just wanted to quickly cite on P, Nick. Plant and since I'm doing that, I should do it for O Zach. I don't know Zach as well as I do Nick and but just. Anytime there's somebody that gets promoted to the, to the leadership team that that was on when I started, it kind of. Tugs at my heartstrings a little bit. So excited to see that. You know, Nick has. Got married, becoming dad and you know, it's just, it's awesome to see people grow and you know. Friendships and invest in their community. So. Probably underselling Zach because I'm sure he's a great guy, but I just. Nick, like I knew, I felt like I needed to say something there. So proud of him and proud of the group. On the other side, so that was more emotional than going to Jay. And talking about garbage or recycling as it were in this case. I think I brought this up before, but so the forty-four cent increase. Through MWA Board here last week. And so just to clarify for anybody, that's a past cost that. Polk City didn't really have anything to do with. It was through the Metro Waste Authority who. Controls the recycling cost center and wanted to make sure they were. Trying to remain as relatively revenue neutral on. On the recycling there. So that's the reason for the increase. Just wanted to add that note.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel. Yes, Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item R from consent agenda. Authorized FY twenty-two budgeted parks and rec vehicle purchased in the amount of thirty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Ron?
Well, I'm just curious as to how this figures in with our use of buses, school buses. Will we not be using them anymore? Or.
I don't know.
Ron, moving forward. Transportation will be done with fifteen passenger vans. It allows us to have something that we can use year-round. Offer not only summer programming, but other school break activities as well. Thanksgiving, Christmas, spring break. Yeah, so this is kind of a cost-cutting measure as well going forward when it comes to our transportation costs. Per year for the next ten to fifteen.
Well, in reading your comments, which I appreciate, thank you. Two fifteen passenger vans, I don't know, I don't know how things are going to change, but in the past. There was years we had three or four school buses that were full and you can't put all them kids in vans.
No, and. So when I came on a year ago, you guys asked me to do a cost analysis of the existing program. And we saw that it had some opportunity for some change. One of those changes is going to be. Moving to shorter duration programming for smaller groups throughout the summer. So people will be signing up for a week or two instead of three days a week for six weeks. It's a more cost-effective model. Yeah, compared to a very large bulk. And obviously this year, we needed to do something different with COVID still hanging around in the summer. So yeah, all of those things considered kind of went into the change.
Yeah, I agree with what you said about COVID, but I'm just, does that mean there will be less kids participating in our program? Will kids be turned away?
No, so over, for instance, the way that it's modeled this summer, I can accommodate a hundred and fifty-six kids. Over the course of six weeks. In twenty nineteen, we had a hundred and thirty-six participants. No, I think we're going to be ballpark roughly the same number of individuals being able to partake in a summer camp. Through Polk City.
And you feel that spending thirty-seven thousand dollars will be cheaper than renting buses?
Well, for instance, last. Sorry, what was that, Ron? What was the last thing you said?
And as a, because now if you run a program the way you are, its cost is going to be down because you only need one bus. To take kids or one small bus, which North Polk schools have also. They have smaller buses. That will handle thirty kids. So you think there'll be, this cost will be lower than. What. Acquiring, using one bus would be one small bus driver.
I think over the duration of any sort of amount of time, let's say ten years. Yes, I think we'll see good cost savings from not having to incur a twelve thousand dollar bill. Every summer to use the buses. Likewise, like I said, with the van, the van is more than a summer solution. It's a twelve-month-a-year solution. So that we can offer programming twelve months a year.
Is that really what we were spending twelve grand to rent buses?
That is correct.
Okay, I mean.
Even in twenty nineteen when numbers were down?
Yes, sir. Looking at the exact number, eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
So this van will have to last at least three years to pay for itself.
I anticipate with regular maintenance, we should easily get ten to fifteen years out of this vehicle.
Well, and as I was saying, I was looking at too, I think it affords us different opportunities, like you were saying, like I see. I think there's senior opportunities like outings that you would then use this van for, I assume. So it's not just the. Switching of how we transport kids in the summer. It is the opportunity for additional. Opportunities that serve a wider population rather than just those summer kids that were able to take advantage of. The rec program.
That's correct. I would be looking into offering senior day trips with what regularity, I'm not sure yet. But for instance, I do have two of them being offered in the summer programming for twenty twenty-one. Right now that would utilize a fifteen-passenger van.
So from my perspective, and I'll maybe ask for a little grace because I had planned on talking about Parks and Rec here in my reports. Section here at the end, but since we're there now, I'll kind of do that. And to me, I, you know, Ron, I think it's a good question to ask, but. A three-year return on a vehicle is pretty much no-brainer in my opinion. I know we're not, you know, school buses were. You know, obviously can hold more people and you know, the maintenance is in by the schools and all of that, but. An investment of thirty-six thousand dollars for, for our own transportation seems to make sense and. But I know too that, you know, there was a lot. I was, maybe not to the degree that you were, Ron, but we're all pretty invested in the old. Parks and Rec program that we had and we're very proud of it and I think for a very good reason for what we had, but. I, to allow Jason to do his job and make recommendations, I think is appropriate. Given the direction that we made and, and for me, you know, seeing, here's where it's going to get off topic a little bit. Seeing catalog, seeing a Polk City Parks and Rec catalog. Just in an electronic form and I'm going to need to get a hard copy by the way, because I want to keep that. But seeing that was a, was a big deal. And I just really appreciate the work that put in, that went into it. You know, I want to make this into something bigger than it is, but. It took a lot to bring Jason on. It took a lot to absorb the first year, you know, the poor guy starts and then two weeks, you know. COVID makes everything, you know, the pandemic is what it is, but you know, couldn't have. Just had worse timing when it comes to that. So just, it made me feel so good to see that we're. Finally having our own programs and, and you know, again, I don't know what the best adult, senior. Kids balance is. I do trust Jason to come up with that. I'm sure it'll evolve. I'm sure it, you know. Will, will change over time and, you know, I'm just really excited. Again, I know this, this is a line item here for a van, but. I just really heartened that we're to this point and I think trusting him to make some of these decisions for the. You know, I'm not sneezing at thirty-six thousand dollars, but in the grand scheme of things, it is a relatively minimal investment and. And one that I'm, I would be happy to make. And again, I'm not, not refuting, you know, the questions that you're asking this stuff. You know, upfront, Ron, like you are, because I think that, you know, it makes a lot of sense, but that's where I'm at.
Well, and let me make one thing clear. It's not that I'm not trusting anyone. It's.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to.
That's not it at all. But we all know, asking questions is what I do and. You know, like you, I'm very proud of that summer rec program that came from nothing and the participation we had. And maybe I'm being selfish and nearsighted, but. I don't want to see those numbers diminish. And if Jason, and I trust Jason that. He's going to come up with something better and bigger and get more people into it and. And if that is indeed the case, I'll be just as proud of these new things as I was that old. So.
Yeah.
Thank you for your answers and. I probably won't be around ten or fifteen years, Jason, to see if that van lasts that long, but I hope I'll be around a while. I'll be around three more for sure.
You're going to want to take some of my programs, Ron, so we'll have to get you signed up for it.
You used the key word there when you're referring to me, seniors.
Yeah, and Ron, just to clarify, I shouldn't use that word, trust. I, I, you know, I don't know what a better word is, but I don't think we should. You know, trust anybody when we're, we're spending other people's money, which is what this is, but I. In his execution of this and so by virtue of which I didn't mean to. Ethan in his execution of this and I and so by virtue of which I didn't mean to imply that you didn't trust him either, I just uh, you know, I I don't wanna micromanage on on the particulars on some of that, and again, that's not, I don't think what you were you were implying either, I just um, I I think it's a, it's a growth thing as as, uh, as the old program you know, gets bigger and morphs into, cuz I'm with you, I I I, there's no reason that, you know, with with a more diverse offering, we couldn't have you know, twice as many kids through the program as we had in years past.
Now, good, I hope you're right and and, uh, you you said some things there that struck home with me and as Jason did and and, uh, it's all part about growing as a, as a, as a community and getting more people involved, which is which is what our sites were, I know you and I have talked about that for a long time, getting more people involved and one of the things I heard from citizens all along was we don't have anything for those teen kids and tween kids and that sort of thing, so thank you, I appreciate the answers to my questions.
Yeah, and and again, just to to further that point, like I I wanna take care of the of of new people and and not just because my wife, I think, has asked me like five times when the schedule coming out, but the the kids that were in the program before too, and and I know that Jason's probably heard from some of those folks as I have on on wondering, and you know, this is change, it it looks different, it's not the one stop shop program that we used to have, it's 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 more independent, which again, I hope allows for more flexibility, I I heard the same things that you did on teens, I heard the same things on, you know, the program we had before kind of catered to, you know, or was more conducive, I should say, to um, uh, at least one parent that was a stay at home parent and and so adding some more flexibility for people that aren't in that situation. Um, hopefully we'll we'll bring some more kids, adults, seniors, uh, in into the into the various programs.
Can I get a motion on consent agenda item H, please? Whichever item that was, sorry. Item R.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Walters.
Motion carries, moving on to new business, uh, item A, resolution twenty twenty one dash nineteen approving the Lee Platt of survey, who's here to speak to that?
Well, I guess I can speak to it, Mayor, this Kathleen Connor, Snyder Associates, City Engineering Representative. Uh, this is a relatively straightforward, uh, plot of survey, uh, in the extraterritorial jurisdiction uh, to the north of one hundred and forty second street, the property owners are wanting to divide off approximately five and a half acres uh, so that they can build a home, uh, on the site, they're intending to maintain ownership of both parcels, so it's really kind of a function of the financing for that new home. Um, this has gone, uh, through review by Polk County and then also review by, uh, Polk City with respect to uh, the R one zoning regulations and fulfills those, uh, planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the plot of survey at their meeting on March fifteenth.
Does anybody have any questions on this? If not, I'd take a motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty one nineteen.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes, Anderson?
Yes.
Our chat?
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, resolution twenty twenty one twenty, amending petition and waiver for Lakeside Fellowship Church, who's here to speak to that one?
I can speak on that this evening. In your packet, um, you have seen a letter from Lakeside Church and an amended um, petition and waiver for their gravel parking lot. Um, so the church did reach out and asked for an extension, um, to pave their gravel portion of their parking lot. Their current, um, petition and waiver expires next month and they are asking for a three year extension. Um, actually, they asked for four year extension and I am recommending to the council that you approve a three year extension. And, um, if anything changes with the building within that three year period, that could be a kicker for when that parking area would need to be paved, but, um, staff has reviewed this and is um, happy to make a recommendation on an amended petition and waiver.
Questions for Chelsea? Let's take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, I need a second. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Our chat?
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty one, Bridgeview Platte, two construction drawings. Who's on, I saw Tom was here, I just didn't, who's speaking to this?
Oh, after you, Kathleen.
Oh, I I apologize, I didn't realize you were there, Paul, you go ahead.
Uh, this is Paul Clausen with Civil Engineering Consultants, twenty four hundred eighty six street, unit twelve, Vermeerdale, Iowa. Um, Bridgeview Platte two is forty one, uh, single family lots. Um, located, uh, extension of Pelican Drive and Bridgeview Street just west of Parker Boulevard. Um, there'll be, uh, two locations for stormwater detention on the site and we're also doing, uh, uh, tree plantings along, uh, Parker Boulevard. Um, there'll also be outlots adjacent to the existing, uh, homes that'll be, uh, sold to the uh, adjacent homeowners, uh, to maintain a a tree buffer. Um, I guess I'll, uh, I'll take any questions you might have from the council and thank you for your consideration.
Kathleen, do you have anything to add at all?
Uh, not really, I'm just, uh, the preliminary plat for this was actually approved, you know, a while ago. Um, but we were waiting to bring the construction drawings, uh, forward until such time as we had the geotechnical report in hand, so on the developer, my understanding is they're planning on, uh, starting construction on the public improvements this spring.
Perfect, anybody have any questions for Paul or Kathleen, or if not, they take a motion on twenty twenty one twenty one? Jeff, did you second?
Yeah, sorry, second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Our chat?
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, resolution twenty twenty one twenty two, approving preliminary plat for Four Seasons Polk City. Who's here tonight on that?
Um, I see Chris Bauer is here, uh, with Shive Hattery, and Chris, if you wanna discuss that.
Sure can, yep, thank you, uh, Chris Bauer, Shive Hattery Engineers, forty one twenty five West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. Um, so what, uh, what we have here is, uh, is really an expansion of the, uh, uh, White Tail Ridge, uh, preliminary plat, which the council, uh, reviewed and, uh, have, uh, approved a couple of, uh, separate, uh, plats, uh, over the last few years, so MJR Development, uh, Jared Ruckel in town there, um, has acquired some additional property to the east, so as part of that acquisition, uh, we have, uh, worked with uh, city staff here, uh, to show a new preliminary plat and really master plan for the entire area uh, of cohesive, uh, ground that, uh, MJR Development, uh, now owns in that area as part of our, uh, push for some additional um, uh, development, uh, so what we have in front of you today, uh, includes, uh, approximately two hundred and fifteen uh, single family lots, uh, ranging in in size from, uh, about eleven thousand square feet to, uh, just over an acre. Um, any other topics, there's a few other topics, a lot of, a lot of sidewalk connectivity, we worked with with city staff to minimize kind of any dead end cul-de-sacs, uh, as part of the development and really trying to incorporate, uh, many of their comments through, uh, some back and forth on this preliminary plat kind of master plan uh, for the development. With that, I'm happy to take any questions or go into more detail on anything and and we have Jared Ruckel on the, on the phone also, uh, as a developer. Uh, be happy to answer some questions too, so Kathleen, I don't know if you wanna address a few of the other items.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just wanted to mention that the developer, uh, work, staff worked with the developer so that we had uh, one large regional park that would serve the entire area, uh, so that's gonna be, uh, four point nine two acres of parkland. Um, so that'll be one parkland dedication for the entire subdivision, uh, per the new code. Seventy five percent of that parkland will need to be graded for active recreational use. Uh, so that's, I guess, one thing I wanted to draw attention to, uh, the developer will be required to plant Parkway trees along White Tail Parkway. Uh, when that goes in, uh, we've talked to the developer and the, uh, plat includes some timing with respect to when uh, the western connection of White Tail Parkway at Hug Drive will, which was approved with White Tail Ridge Plat one some time ago, uh, but the timing with respect to how that will happen with and in relationship to the plating that you have uh, before you at this point in time, uh, the other, uh, kind of outstanding item is, uh, per your new subdivision regulations, the developer has submitted a traffic study. Uh, we have reviewed that, we've got some comments on it, we're working through those. Uh, we anticipate that before the construction drawings for plat one would be brought for you, that we would have that worked out and that, uh, at that point in time, or certainly before the final plat for the for the first plat uh, that we would have a development agreement that would cover the developer's responsibility for, um, upgraded improvements uh, that are, uh, related both to sanitary sewer, uh, connection and upgrades at the, uh, the lift station in T C, what was T C I plat six, but is now, uh, uh, Big Creek Valley. And also, uh, we relate with respect to traffic improvements, uh, that are related to the additional traffic volume here. Uh, which may include some, uh, potential improvements to the pavements on, uh, Northwest Seventy Second Street, which will be wind up being North Ninth Street, um, and, uh, at Hug Drive and North Third Intersection. So we'll have a little bit more answers as development continues, but, uh, and the developer is aware of those, so, um, again, those are issues that will be resolved before the final plats are approved.
It, uh, it seems to me like there's a lot of issues with this, do we, uh, do we wanna prove this before those issues are resolved?
Um, well, tho- those issues, if you're talking about the traffic study, we can, again, uh, make, if you want this, the motion to be subject to the development agreement before, uh, the final plat for plat one, you certainly can. Uh, the part of the reason that they aren't resolved is that it requires, um, the pavement study, uh, requires geotechnical uh, revaluation, uh, which will be done when they do the, uh, the geotechnical report for the plat one construction drawings.
Okay, and this, this is, this is the burger and ground on Hug Drive?
Yeah, the burger and ground and then what was originally planted as an, as the unplanted part of, so some of it was actually preliminary preliminary planted before as a part of White Tail Ridge. And but that's been reconfigured so that both the the Burger and Farm and the north portion portion of White Tail Ridge are now consolidated into one development, again, it gives you the benefit of larger park ground, larger parkland dedication, uh, and just more cohesive development between the two properties.
And for the record, it's it's R one?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the lots are actually lar- larger than what you, for the most part, larger than your your R one would require, there's some, there's some large lots out there. Um, I guess the other thing is just to be aware, uh, that P N Z did make the recommendation, kind of upon uh, the request of of Snyder and Associates, is that we would up then update the comprehensive plan to show White Tail Ridge or White Tail Parkway, excuse me, where it's more in alignment with where where the more detailed design, uh, falls, so that as the properties develop, and particularly, for example, if, uh, property to the east comes in the city or they wanna develop the the property between seventy second and third, that we have a a a means to ma- ensure the White Tail Parkway corridor is preserved. Um, so that would be something that would be addressed with the comprehensive plan amendment that we have a public hearing, we ask you to set a public hearing on the con- consent agenda, so that would be before you as a part of that comprehensive plan amendment at the next meeting.
Yeah, so that was gonna be, uh, one of my questions, Kathleen, could you kind of walk me through the evolution of of White Tail uh, Parkway, um, and and I ask because I I do how do I say this, like, uh, part of me is concerned that we're holding ourselves to a standard that the 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 rest of the county maybe isn't in terms of that, I I do, I I think as as B and Z talked about this, this is an important consideration, especially as, uh, properties along Hug have been developed with with that change in mind, and so, uh, it it just, it, and I've talked about some of the other thoughts I have on this here in a little bit, could you just walk through where where we've gone from the first development up there until now, and then the progress maybe to the east as well?
Well, um, just in in general, the the idea for what is now known as Park, uh, White Tail Parkway came up as through the comprehensive plot, uh, planning process in twenty sixteen. And the emphasis, the the importance at that point to have an east west street that would carry traffic as development continues to the north, trying to alleviate the burden that you might otherwise see on Hug Drive, with the understanding that Hug Drive has a lot of constraints with respect to topography, the the tight curves, uh, both vertically and horizontally, so trying to give an alternative, um, route for traffic. Um, then when White Tail Ridge Plat one came in, uh, the developer was showing it in a location that did not work real well as you, because there's also some constraints between Seventy Second Street and North Third because of the of the, uh, Wolf Creek crossing. So we took some time to look at what is the most reasonable location for White Tail Parkway to extend from Seventy Second Street and kind of squeeze it in, given homes that are already developed on Third and the topography, uh, and cons- and, uh, constraints with respect to the environmental uh, between Seventy Second Street and Third, so, uh, at that point in time, we kind of defined a, the best, uh, more specific alignment, and so what we're asking is that the comp plan White Tail, White Tail Ridge Plat one then was planted based on that, uh, so we're just kind of going back to say, let's make sure that comp plan matches the more detailed design that we has, uh, has occurred since then. So the comp plan laid the groundwork for it, but we've got a lot more design specifics in place now, so we just kind of wanna make sure that we tweak it so that the, so that the comp plan matches the more detailed design. If that answers your question.
It does, and and that's, that's exactly what I was looking for, I don't know how, you, so you answered a probably poorly phrased question, cuz it I know that's taken a lot of evolutions and and I guess the only other part of that is do we know, and maybe this isn't for you or or anybody for that matter, but do we know of any progress to the east that aligns with where we have it now, or where we're proposing to have the road now?
At at this point, no, I mean, I think there was some discussion at one point with some of the property owners over there, but, um, uh, about potentially annexing, um, they were at some public meetings when Burger and Farms was annexed and then rezoned to uh, from A one to R one A, um, but nothing, nothing specific there. Um, but again, the idea is to make sure that the comp plan gives the city the ability to reserve a corridor there so that if they come in, for example, with a, and they're not annexing into the city, which they don't have to do, and they want to create some large lot, you know, estate lots along there, that the city has the ability to reserve a corridor for White Tail Parkway.
Yeah, and that's the tricky part, it is, it, you know, is the execution of that giving all the timing, so it it appears to me that this, and and, you know, so to kind of take that point at a little bit higher level, like th- this is, you know, one hundred and forty acres is is a sizable development, uh, I I like the the density or, quite honestly, lack thereof, um, with most quite honestly, lack thereof with most of these lots and just trying to maintain, you know, it's different for us. We haven't had a a ton of, you know, grid layout development because we haven't had a lot of, you know, relatively farmland, flat farmland development. So this is what I think a lot of our other communities are seeing more of, and we just haven't been in that mode. So it makes all the more important that, one, we maintain the work that we did with the, you know, the homes that were already, are already developed on Hug and that big picture in-state strategic plan for how this, you know, will connect decades down the road. From my perspective, I think everything fits, and thank you for that additional.
Yeah. And the other thing just to mention is that when the development first came in, again, it had, you know, smaller, smaller park and a few more cul-de-sacs. So the developer did work with staff to, I think, get a more cohesive plan. And I think, number one, not to speak for Mike, but I think Public Works is happy that, you know, at least a couple of those cul-de-sacs went away. So, and, like I said, having the one larger park seems to give the city a lot more opportunity than smaller parks that don't have as much usable area.
Yeah, I caught Mike's smile and for good reason.
Does anybody have anything else to ask, Ed, or make a motion for that matter?
Yeah, this is Jared Ruckel, 1425 Northwest Hug Drive, developer, and I just appreciate the comments. And we're excited to pull this together, excited we were able to pull a bigger parcel together and have a bigger master plan that we can work through and have a better park layout and strategy moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
So Jared, what's your timeline now, just to get an idea on, you know, we've got a bunch of different plats here and obviously don't need to get into plats, you know, past three, four, five, I don't know, somewhere in that range. But for your first couple, how do you see those coming to fruition?
So we're really pushing to try and get the Plat 1 completed yet this year. And that's roughly, I think, 24 lots. I'm just going off memory here, but generally speaking, what we're looking at is trying to do, you know, around 30 lots a year, every year. And obviously, we would bump that up based on demand.
Yeah, that helps too, because the other thing that scares me, like I talked about earlier, this is relatively uncharted territory in terms of a singular development being this size is that what I would call, you know, measured progress. You know, things will change and, you know, obviously, demand-driven is the name of the game here, but doing it at a not-too-rapid pace, I think, probably will benefit us all in the long run.
Yep, that's our, that's our plan, and that's basically what we've executed with Whitetail Ridge Plats 1 and 2, and then the Big Creek Valley, you know, we split that in half, and I think that worked out really well. They filled out nicely and and those are, Big Creek Valley is sold out. Actually, both those are all sold out right now, so.
Can I get a motion on this, please?
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Next item, Ledgestone Ridge. First item, Resolution 202123, approving PUD master plan. Who's speaking to this one?
Kathleen, will you give a report on this?
Sure. Yeah, this is the amended PUD master plan for what was originally known as Parcel 3 of TCI Pod K. Which, at that point in time, when it was originally approved on October 22nd, 2012, there was a plan that include, that showed 28 detached garden homes in more of a townhomes type regime. However, there was a note on the plan that said that by attached and single-family homes were also allowed. So the real reason that, which, since we're coming forward now, by attached, the reason for the PUD amendment was primarily due to the fact that the developer is now proposing a minimum lot area of 4,000 square feet rather than 5,000 square feet. So there was a slight reduction there in lot size, a minimum lot with a 35 feet rather than 40 feet. They're also showing a public street rather than a private street, as it was shown. And they're proposing farmhouse-style architecture rather than traditional. P&amp;Z did consider this at their March 15th meeting and recommended approval of it. The second part of the project is the site plan and preliminary plat. Staff had reviewed that based on the PUD amendment as that P&amp;Z had recommended for approval, and the site, it was consistent. However, at the special meeting right before this, P&amp;Z did voted the preliminary plat and site plan down. So they approved the PUD, recommended approval of the PUD amendment, but not for the site plan and preliminary plat. The new subdivision ordinance requires, says that P&amp;Z is to, if they vote something, a project, a preliminary plat down, they're supposed to indicate the reasons for that. And the reasons that I have listed, and certainly Jamie or Chelsea, or I'm sorry, Jenny or Chelsea can chime in if I missed something. But the main thing, one of the, was that it did not adhere to the preliminary, to the PUD master plan. And by that, they meant the previously approved one, not the one that P&amp;Z recommended for approval. So so one of the primary reasons for voting down the preliminary plat was that it didn't adhere to the current PUD master plan as opposed to the one that they approved, recommended for approval at the meeting. They also said, recommended, or voted down because it didn't, the architecture that was approved or recommended for approval on March 15th, which was a farmhouse, but they recommended against the site plan and preliminary plat because it didn't have the traditional farmhouse architecture. They also mentioned that the HOA fees, they wanted there to be a homeowners association that took care of maintenance of the buildings. That was not a requirement of the original PUD. But they felt that the HOA fees should be more consistent with what's going on in the rest of TCI. One of the members mentioned that they thought the lots were too small, the 4,000 square feet was too small compared to the 5,000 square feet. And they mentioned that they would like to see the developer meet with the neighbors. They did not cite any specific code requirements that the preliminary plat and site plan did not adhere to, however. So it's more not adhering to a PUD master plan. They, so there's a little bit of conflict there, where they recommended approval of PUD master plan, but but the denial on the preliminary plat was related to the old, that it didn't adhere to the original PUD master plan. Hopefully, that made, what I said there made sense. It's a bit confusing.
So we had a PUD master plan. There was a change to it that was approved, but the denial on the site plan was because it didn't conform with the previous PUD master plan. But it was in conformance with what was most recently approved?
Yes, recommended by approval. Yep.
Or yes, recommended by, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that kind of put my P&amp;Z liaison hat on a little bit. There was some confusion with last week, bringing spring break, there were a couple members gone, and then, you know, we had some on Zoom and some just on the phone. So there was some initial confusion on the the PUD vote, which was, like I said, three to two, but noted to be a decline. And then Chelsea clarified at the end, and so that's why it moved to the special meeting with the larger group of P&amp;Z, you know, an hour before this meeting.
Well, I'm going to have to stay consistent in the fact that I don't think we need anything to increase density, which it sounds like this is going to do. And this happens time and time again. There's a plat that we think we know what we're getting and what was approved, that people put a lot of work into. And then somebody else comes along and wants to change that. So I think it needs to fit in with our master plan. And I hate to go against the P&amp;Z, but I am who I am.
So Ron, the P&amp;Z Commission did approve the PUD master plan. They did not approve the preliminary plat and site plan.
Yeah. But that isn't the one, when this was originally presented, this is, this deviates from what was originally going to be there. I.e., smaller lots now, more houses, different alignment, public street instead of a private street, lots of changes from what was originally approved, correct? Way back when?
I don't know that I would say a lot of changes. I'd say a handful of changes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, to that point, Ron, I'm struggling with this because, and, you know, and we got, I think we got everything that, I said that earlier in the P&amp;Z meeting, but I should have probably clarified. Chelsea, we got everything that that P&amp;Z got in terms of comments.
I believe so. Yes, I can confirm that, Rob.
Okay, okay. So, because I know there was, there was a reference made to 30, and I didn't get anywhere in that number, and I was trying to total.
There were not, there were not 30 comments received. There were 19 emails, of which two or three of them were from the same people.
Yeah. Some of the people that called in were the same. I was back to, so again, I got a little top off a little bit there, Ron, but to me, I'm, I'm probably more inclined to more individual homes than I am HOA homes. I know that was referenced in a couple of the and a couple of the emails as well. And to me, you know, you can cast your lot with the group, and if, and if things go south, everybody goes south. But if you've got, you know, all that money that you would be paying in dues to spend on your own home, I generally feel like that's probably a little bit more appropriate way to go, where it, where it makes sense. And I think the rest of the immediate area is in that same boat. They've got covenants that would be covenants here, you know, but anyway, so I struggle to see that as a huge detractor. I do agree, you know, and you just talked about it with the other development. I'm not in favor of more dense than less dense. Now, if I look at the other plan had 28, and this has 32, so four homes, you know, I don't know if that's a significant upgrade in density, but it is something to to be cognizant of. And public versus private street, I don't I feel this A, B, C, and 1, 2, 3. I don't know that there's a strong strong plus or minus to either one, you know, as to some of the comments, you know, I doubt that this is a unique area. I mean, we've got, I think, the tradition in that area, you've got homes up to 700,000, and then, you know, right there on Broadway, you've got homes in the $100,000 range. And, and I was trying to go back through, I went to the proposal with vintage. And I think the market point here is the same as that one was. So I don't see this lessening the value, and, you know, there was references to spiraling down. I think that's a little bit hyperbolic. So I don't, I see a lot of these things as changes. I don't know that I see them as negatives.
Well, and I don't, I don't want to argue this point, but you know, you mentioned $100,000 homes on Broadway. Well, in my mind, the difference being those homes were there when those people built their $700,000 homes. They were aware that those were there.
Yeah.
And weren't going to go away, where these are coming in later. I just, I, and I was on the P&amp;Z when the PUD zoning was originally adopted, and it's been abused ever since. It was not a vehicle to get more lots on a piece of ground. That's not the vehicle. The vehicle was to preserve green space, to build with the topography, which is not, not even relative anymore, because developers come in and just change the topography. They don't build to what the topography is. So I just, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, and I wasn't using the, I mean, I didn't look up Broadway like I looked up tradition. I wasn't using that as a justification. I just, that, to me, speaks to the kind of unique nature of where this, you've got a golf course, you've got a hotel, you've got high-end homes, you've got, you know, starter homes. There's just a lot there. And I do know, I think, kind of clunky P&amp;Z process here. I think that there were references made to speeding this through, and I don't think that's the case at all. I think it's you know, that there have been, I think there were three other proposals for this vintage, and maybe just, maybe this is the third, but and I know there's been resistance to all of them. In fact, if I've got, tried to keep notes on all this stuff to make sure that I'm keeping track of what people say when they give it to us, and thought I had one of the people that was, I was at the vintage vintage meeting with that was against it then, that is now saying that they were in favor of it. So I don't know what to make of some of this, to be honest.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mandy, sorry.
We got a lot of comments on this, and again, I do appreciate public comments because that's what we're here for, you know. So however things land, we do appreciate hearing from people. Sometimes some things, you know, get, I don't want to say taken too far, but I like to think that if we have quality townhomes like this, they won't necessarily overburden our police, things like that. So, but when I step back, my questions are, number one, you know, and I guess, Chelsea, this is for you. I like to think that we probably didn't do anything to expedite the process or cut corners. But since that was raised, I would like to just speak to that point real quick. And then my next thing is, yeah, as Rob kind of alluded to, it's not like we're doubling the density, or, you know, I mean, we're, we're increasing it by four units. So that's, again, where I'm kind of looking at this thinking, you know, in a context and what could go there, what was originally planned, and how far are we deviating? You know, that was a point that was brought up. Yes, it's an increase. It's not, you know, atrocious in my mind. One of the other things, and I would, then this is maybe, I guess I'm throwing a lot of questions to different people, but another thing that was brought up is, you know, why wouldn't this one have to have an association like other parts of TCI, things like that. So I just, if we could kind of speak to a few of those specific comments that were brought up. So yeah, Chelsea, can you talk about the process on this?
So I think staff has been working with Jared for close to a year on the concept. We have provided several comments. We've had several meetings on this, and I think we've really taken a hard look related to the public street. I don't think we had any issues with things like that. So Jared met the deadlines. So he put together a proposal. We worked through it. He met the deadline for the March Planning and Zoning Meeting. Unfortunately, something a little odd happened with the vote last week. And I only felt that since it was the city's fault for how the vote kind of landed, that we continue to keep Jared on his time schedule, which is why we had a special P&amp;Z meeting, and that is why we have all of these items on the council agenda for tonight. I hope that kind of answers your question, but we've been working on this for a while.
Well, and to go back to
Well, and to go back to that too, and again, to some of Kathleen's comments, you know, again, it was approved at P and Z, you know, the root of these changes. It was, tonight was, again, it was, it seems like a little bit of a clunky, clunky process here, but through the process, it sounds like there has been a lot of discussion back and forth. The developer has met, you know, timelines. There's, we've not, you know, necessarily cut corners because again, what was approved at the previous P and Z meeting or recommended to us, you know, is really what was, was brought to us tonight. So regardless of, you know, the other piece of it, I guess, really the, it seems like the amendment to the PUD master plan is, is the bigger issue that people are having a concern with. And that piece followed the normal process.
Yes.
Just one other question that you raised was related to the homeowners association. There, there will be a homeowners association for this development. It's just that it will be responsible for maintaining the private stormwater management facilities. And if they decide to come back with any kind of a townhome monument sign, it won't be responsible for maintenance of the units. But I guess I just wanted to clarify that there would in fact be a homeowners association. It's just more like a single family homeowners association where it's responsible for private improvements, but not structures and driveways.
Can you, since I, I wasn't on way back when DCI came, talk to me a little bit about, you know, the homeowner association requirements for the rest of TCI? And, you know, is that a requirement that is spelled out?
I, I was not here and maybe Amy can speak to that better. That actually went through before my time. I don't think there's, you don't have any code requirement that requires a developer to have a homeowners association similar to covenants where those are a developer imposed requirements that the city does not control. So architectural design, for example, for TCI goes through a development review committee that is made up of NAP properties personnel. It's not, the city doesn't handle that. That's, that's kind of a private deal, similar to any covenants that you have. New code now requires homeowners association where there are like stormwater management facilities to take care of.
Yeah, generally associations are not, not city driven. They're almost exclusively developer driven. Unless, as Kathleen mentioned, we do have occasionally stormwater management issues that we want to make sure dealt with. And there's an association in place that has, that we can look to, to take care of those matters. But generally the city, I mean, even if we, we wouldn't be the ones that would require it. And we definitely would not be the ones that would be the one that are managing that or policing it, for lack of a better word. That's the, the homeowners responsibilities, the property owners within that association are the ones that based on those association documents are going to be pushing to make sure that things are in compliance with the association. The city stays out of those completely.
There isn't a unified HOA at TCI. I can speak for that. Our street does not have an HOA, but we do have an annual maintenance and monument fee, whereas the townhomes on and the garden homes on Turn the Clubway do have an HOA. So it's, it's not consistent from plat to plat. And I don't think I use consistent loosely, not as a bad thing. It's just how the development went from plat to plat.
Thank you guys for the background there. Cause I know that was a point that some people, you know, raised as a concern. I didn't have the background on it. But yeah, either way, it's not something that is our call.
Tom, I see you down here in the corner. Do you have anything you want to add by chance?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, not really. I've been following the conversation and you know, agree with what's been said. If you have any questions for me, be glad to answer them.
Well, Tom, could you, I know just because I was on the P and Z meeting, but could you kind of clarify your role in all this?
Yeah, Tom Whitman, my title is Development Coordinator with NAP Properties. I am a member of the Design Review Committee for Tournament Club of Iowa. And Jared, Jared's development here is, is one of the last ones that we reviewed. The Designer Review Committee is Stuart Ruddy, our General Counsel. Also Bill Knapp, second co-chairman at NAP Properties and myself. You know, reviewing Jared's project, we, we we asked him to upgrade the garage doors to a carriage style design. He agreed to that. We asked him to add some shutters that she agreed to. He had an alternate building elevation for the rear of these buildings and our concern was excuse me, the appearance from the golf course side. That we wanted a consistent look, you know, more of a three sixty look with that farmhouse style. We asked him to, to beef up some support posts for a roof above the patios to an eight by eight inch cross section. He agreed to that. We asked him to, you know, any stone work that, that goes around an outside building corner has to extend at least two feet past that corner. We don't want any stonework or brick ending specifically at a hard corner. So he agreed to all of our comments. You know, Bill two specifically said, you know, since we are turning over our design review responsibilities to terrace, you know, which, which is a real estate management company that's going to be taking over these design review committee responsibilities. Bill two said, you know, this is the last one we're going to be reviewing. We want to make sure it's a good product that we can feel proud of. And we feel that it is. And we support Jared in this project.
Jared, how about you? Do you want to speak to anything that you were just mentioning?
Yeah, thank you, Tom, and thank you, Mayor. What we're proposing is a high end buy attached concept. Like we provided the, the 3D rendering, which if you look at that, I think it's a really nice looking building. We chose the farmhouse style. Just because that's about what we're seeing about half of the houses that are going up in Big Creek Valley, for example, in that style. Now, there was some concerns from neighbors brought up that doesn't match the existing homes in TCI or in Tradition Drive. But like I said, if you drive down to Big Creek Valley, you'll see farmhouse style side by side with similar houses that are in Tradition. The buy attached concept, part of the reason we chose that is it does allow this, the space is relatively shallow lots in order to make all that fit. And with the buy attached concept and two story concept, then it allows for a covered patio. So you'll notice all the, just about all the units have a covered patio at the back. That was one of the driving factors for why we chose that. And obviously the prior zoning did allow for buy attached units. So we, that's where that came from. That also allowed us to go to a the thirty five foot setback in the front so that the front yard is more substantial, similar to a residential housing development where you've got more grass. You know, the previous style that was, was a garden house was more of a townhome style. So you have sidewalks right up against the curb and then very minimal yard in front. So we were trying to get away from that. That also allows a longer driveway so people can park in their driveway rather than parking in the street. Which again gets back to typical public street type scenario. The previous design also had kind of this weird mix of the, the new street that would be added would be private. So you'd have some of the units that would be on a private street. Then this, the units that were proposed on Boulder Point obviously is a public street. So that was another reason why we made that change. But again, we're excited about the project. I know there's, there's been some comments back from, from people and the biggest thing it seems to be is they seem to be against the buy attached concept, which has always been how it's been zoned.
Just to circle back. So one of your, I guess, points on this option is it allows more likelihood that people can park in their own driveway than on the street and they will have a yard.
Correct. Which those two things combined, you know, make it look, in my opinion, more like a typical residential development versus a townhome kind of feel. And you know, a lot of times you drive through a townhome type development, you'll see a lot of people parking on the street just because there's not parking available in their driveway. From a cost perspective, obviously that drives the cost up because there's, you know, about an extra five thousand dollars in driveway to get it there. But I think it's a good alternative.
Yeah, no, I agree. That can be a challenge with some of the townhome developments is, you know, you get a few people there and there's nowhere to park. So I appreciate that consideration.
Yeah. And that, in going through the emails, that was one resonant point that, that came through and, and you know, the impacts of, of traffic. I do, I don't know if anybody knows this. I was trying to find the, the file on. So the, the, back to the density question, the vintage plan did have twenty eight, but it also had a like a community facility thing, right? So we're I know I'm probably kind of putting you on the spot and this is probably a Kathleen question more than anybody wouldn't even going from twenty eight to thirty two, we gotta be looking at pretty comparable lot sizes just with the reduction in that community center lot. Do you know what the average lot size for the vintage was, Kathleen?
I don't, I don't recall right off the top of my head and I apologize. I'm not where I can look that up very easily. But I, they did not change it from the five thousand to four thousand. They did leave it at five thousand square feet. But they did have that same number of lots plus a community room. So obviously that takes up some space. What you have before you now of the thirty two units, eleven of them are less than five thousand square feet. So it's not that all of the lots that are out there on this are, are less than five thousand. So most of them still are, so most of them are still over five thousand, even with the current plan that Jared's proposing.
And Kathleen, I looked up your memo from that, that never made it to council, which is probably why it was only sent to P and V, but
Right.
They, the concept for vintage was actually for twenty five garden homes.
Okay.
And then they were adding an accessory community building with a pool.
Right.
Part of their plan.
Right. And it was, it was a private street still. The one thing too, just so you're aware, when they made the switch to a wanting a public street for this, your new subdivision ordinance has a specific requirement for driveway spacing, which is why the new plan also has joint driveways for the buy attached. So that there, that leaves more opportunity for on-street parking and snow removal and that type of thing. So because the driveway spacing then will be actually a little bit greater than what you might have in a, in a standard eighty foot wide, single family subdivision. There was some discussion at one of the meetings where there was concern about the amount of traffic. But according, again, according to your new subdivision ordinance, you can have up to thirty lots on a cul-de-sac and you're, you're, this is less than, this cul-de-sac has less than that. So so they're, they don't, number one, kick in the knee for a traffic impact study. And they also meet the requirement for no more than thirty lots on a cul-de-sac. Because obviously six of the lots are not fronting on the cul-de-sac.
All right. Does anybody have anything else to add? Any questions, comments, or still waiting for a motion on Resolution twenty one, twenty three on the amendment of the PUD master plan? I'll ask again if we could get a motion on Resolution twenty one, twenty, or twenty twenty one dash twenty three, amending the PUD master plan?
I'm moved.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Start chat.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty four, approving the preliminary plat slash site plan. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
We just have a little question here, really quickly.
I'm sorry.
Um.
Nope.
So Amy, P and Z did not approve this tonight. And I just want to make sure we walk through the recourse. So basically it's for the site plan and both the preliminary plat. I recognize some things changed when we updated our subdivision ordinance. But what are the repercussions tonight if the council does not approve this?
Well, if the council doesn't approve it, then it's incumbent upon Jared to bring back another site plan at some point. If he wants to move it forward. But keeping in mind, number one, P and Z is a recommending body. It's not the, it doesn't have the final say. And second, this is not one of those situations where even if they voted it down, you need a super majority, a simple majority. So three of you voting in favor of it will be sufficient for it to pass.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I think we all needed that. So thank you, Amy.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any question, any other questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Start chat.
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all who were on the call. Next item, third reading ordinance twenty twenty one dash twelve hundred, amending chapter one fifty five of the building code. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Start chat.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, resume in-person meetings for mayor or town, mayor and council. Sorry. Chelsea?
I can't remember the last time we had this discussion, but I know that we had talked about resuming in-person meetings after spring break. And the council, the next council meeting is scheduled three weeks from tonight, so April twelfth. So I'm going to make a recommendation. I'd like to have some open discussion on this and we can talk about moving forward, but I'd like to see us try to put together some sort of proposal for getting back to in-person council meetings. Kind of after reviewing what some of the other metro communities are doing and knowing that we're going to open City Hall April fifth. I'd like to tentatively schedule April twelfth to be back in person or hybrid. My recommendation would be that the council and city clerk, myself could be in person. If anybody does not want to participate in person, virtual is still an option. Masks would, would be required. I'm still trying to work on putting some Plexiglas up on the Diaz. But at this point in time, masks would be required. We'd have to work out some of those details prior to the next meeting. The only thing I, I think I would ask of the council, if we were to move to in-person meetings, April twelfth, I'd recommend that it just be council and a few staff people for that meeting. And then we can come in with a phased approach for inviting the public back to our meetings, obviously. the council chambers is not a very large space, so numbers are going to be small for public participation. But I think it would be an option. I would just like the council to acknowledge staff trying to work through a hybrid meeting one time before we welcome the public back in. The only other thing I'd like to say is, what I think we should do for the boards and commissions is let all of them decide on how they'd like to continue operating. Obviously, they're welcome to come back in person at any time, but if they want to continue to do virtual, that, that would be at the discretion of the various boards and commissions. And I think that some of them will choose to continue to be virtual. With that in mind, I sent you all some information on the Des Moines Metro and how they're operating, if their city hall was open, if their library was open, in-person meetings, et cetera. So I hope you had time to look at that. But I, I do think that we're ready for a phased approach. It's been well over a year and I know we've been talking about it for a few months now. So I would like to have a discussion with the council about resuming in-person meetings April 12th.
I think that sounds like a reasonable approach. Again, it's been a period of time. I personally am comfortable with it. I think with city hall opening, that does kind of, I guess, give us a good trigger point to have this discussion again, make the decision. Again, I personally am okay with it, but I can't speak for everyone. So I'll, I'll let others speak, but I think that sounds like a reasonable approach. And, you know, again, starting with council and maybe a few others and slowly working our way up. As long as, you know, again, my, my number one consideration through all this is that everyone, including the public, is able to participate, you know, to the best extent possible. I think with us going back to in-person, I think as long as, you know, if, if somebody couldn't or chose not to attend, that they can still, you know, actively participate and that there is plenty of capacity for public to call in and be heard, you know, easily with not allowing them to physically be there right away.
Absolutely. So I, I would suggest that if we go back to in-person, then the remainder of the staff that isn't able to be in person and people giving presentations would participate via Zoom. And the public would participate via phone for that first meeting. And then I think we can work into something different, but absolutely everybody would have an opportunity to participate.
Yeah, so I, I'll go next. No surprise, I, I, I'm with you on this, Chelsea. I think it's appropriate. I saw somewhere there, we're down to like 130 or 40 cases in a day, which is like a year old in terms of, of that level. And I know last time we really talked about this in August, that was cited as one of the reasons not to do it. So I think the logic tracks. You know, I, I do think that, that, and if it needs to be a phased approach, to your point, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. But one of the reasons that I, I think is appropriate to go back is, is for meetings like tonight, for P and Z meetings like today and last week, where the, the perception, because there's not the, the face-to-face connection that folks are used to, when there's not a pandemic, and they're unsure about something to, to be able to, to voice their concern. So you know, if, I get your point of, you know, it'd be fair to, to do a trial run. You know, and I think not only to the, it's not like it's a, the, back to the numbers, it's a, you know, one day, you know, drought, it's, it's been at that level. I find it interesting that fight the urge to make this too political, but since I've been on enough meetings where it's been done the other way, I feel it's allowable a little bit, but you know, the, the governor got railed for making the changes six weeks ago and there's been no spike whatsoever. And as was widely forecast and minimally reported since then. So I think everything tracks. The one maybe piece that I would say, like, I, I appreciate getting the commissions and boards input. I do think we, as do they, serve at, at the ledger of the public. So you know, if, if there's a good reason for a, a board or commission to, to stay virtual or hybrid, okay, but I, I think that it's the, the benefit of, of proof is, is on that side rather than you want to stay virtual, you can, just because it's easier. So and I don't say that flippantly, I just, again, I, I think we have a responsibility to, to serve the public that we're elected by and, and I take that seriously. So that's where I'm at.
Well, I don't, I don't think that being cautious is not taking things seriously. And unfortunately, this, in my mind, anyway, this whole thing has been political since the very beginning. And I'm willing to give it a try, but I want everybody to understand that if I feel uncomfortable anytime, I'm going to leave. But I'm willing to give it a try.
Yeah, I'm the same, Ron. I, I think we give it a good shot and if it works, great. And if we find that there's discomfort from council or staff that they have the opportunity to not attend in person. And if our technology allows that hybrid option to work, then, you know, people can still participate. So I think the phase-in approach will work and we'll see what happens.
And I would agree with that as well and would also like to say that this was never political. For me, it was always about those people that I have to take care of. So I'm glad that we were able to work through this, this whole year. It wasn't easy, but we, regardless of that, were able to get some stuff done and work through those challenges. So yeah, if, if the 12th is the day, it sure works for me. So looking forward to it.
Thank you for those comments, Jason. I appreciate those. And I, I too am willing to give it a try. And I think, I think that in a year with all this, the, all, all that's been going on and what we've all been through, I think we as a city council and a city government have done an excellent job. And I commend you, I commend your leadership and Chelsea's leadership to getting us through this year. So thank you.
So do we need anything official, Chelsea, or we, that's just what we're saying and we're doing that?
Yeah, I think you can, we, we have enough direction here from the council that we will adjust our agenda for the next meeting. Just a reminder, we do have a work session on the 12th. We, we will do that in person. I will work with our presenter to either do in-person or virtual, but yeah, no, I think that's good enough. So thank you.
So just real quick, have you worked through some of the technology issues that were, I know that was part of the reason as well, that we weren't able to do some of the hybrid stuff earlier, at least from what I remember?
Yes and no. We have not worked through all of them. I think some of those will work itself out July 1st, though, so.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, moving on, reports in particulars. Oh, sorry.
Forget you have to revisit 6U to, that you moved to 7H.
Ah, thanks. I wrote, made myself a note there, but I have a lot of other chicken scratch here. So yes. Item H authorized FY22 budgeted Snyder and Associates engineering services agreement for inflow and infiltration or the INI study in the amount of $29,800. Do we need an explanation to this or just a motion?
I can explain a little bit, Mayor.
Thanks.
You, you've heard about this on, in the CIP discussions and the latest budget discussions, we talked about this INI study and how we can, you know, use this to try to, at some point, get infiltration out of our system. That's really what this is to do. We pay for every drop of water that goes through the WRA meter. And this is one of those situations where we can look at that and, and see what we can do. The first part of this study is to study the flow. And we are in a situation right now where we'd like to get that done yet here coming up, like, that's why it's on the agenda right now, to be honest with you. We want to get it here in April before the heavier rains come. So we'd like to study it in low-flow situations. And then of course, when it starts raining, we'll be, we'll be studying this all the way through. And it'll be targeted so we know some areas of town where this is going to be coming from. So in a, in a short explanation, that's what it is. And I'll take any other questions if you have any.
No questions.
Sorry. Just my only comment was that we pulled it from consent to business just to make sure that we were doing this the right way, right? There was no other reason to do it that way. Yes.
That's my understanding.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Just, just a quick comment. I think it's something that, that needs to be done. It's, it's a potential to, maybe not right away, we won't see it, but in the future, maybe we may see some cost saving to the citizens of Buck City.
Sounds great. I need a motion, please. Roll call, please.
Yes, Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
That's Dane.
Motion carries. Next item, reports in particulars. Under reports in particulars, we do have a proclamation for the 2021 National Library Week proclamation, which I did sign. April 4th through the 21st, I'm sorry, April 4th through the 10th of 2021 is National Library Week and we encourage all residents to visit the library and access resources and services. So that's for National Library Week, April 4th through the 10th. Does anybody have anything else for the good of the cause?
I just want to say really quickly, if you have not checked out the Parks and Recreation brochure, please make sure to do so. Our Parks and Rec director, Jason Tran, put a lot of work and effort into that. And I think it's exciting. So please take the time to review that.
I was going to speak to that as well. I didn't speak to it during the van approval, but I did want to call out the, I guess, the new opportunities that we have for the Park and Rec program. I know Jason put a lot of work, a lot of thought into it. It is different than what we've had before. I think in a year where COVID is still going on, I mean, the reality of our old program is that it, it would have still been really difficult to pull that off, you know, for logistical reasons too. But I think this is a great, number one, it's, you know, in smaller doses. So for planning purposes and in light of everything going on right now, I think this is a great time to give something like this a try. I need to look a little more in depth and decide what all we're going to sign up for, but I think there's a good, healthy variety of options to take advantage of. So like I said, I'm looking forward to digging a little more into it and deciding what to get my kids signed up for. But again, I know change can be difficult, especially when we do have, you know, a great history of a great program that a lot of kids were able to take advantage of. But I'm excited to, to give the new opportunities a try and give a lot of, again, different opportunities for different people to participate in as well. So thanks again, Jason, on that. And then to circle back again, I just want to reiterate on the Ledge Stone Ridge. Again, I, we don't take decisions like that lightly. We appreciate all of the comments that we receive. I felt like we, we had a good, healthy discussion. I think this is something where, even though there is more density, I, I feel like the developer has made a concerted effort to, you know, make it the best possible product there. You know, considering things like parking, things like that. So I know sometimes things like that are, are difficult, but I appreciate everybody and the work that went into that, the discussions that were held. And that's all I got.
Anybody else?
Mayor, this is Jason with Parks and Rec. I, I just kind of wanted to piggyback on what Chelsea and Mandy said there, that the things that went into this summer brochure were certainly designed with COVID precautions in mind. A lot of those would be location, also roster size for particular activities. And any of those that do utilize a private business when we are inside, obviously those will be using even more COVID precautions as well. So anybody that reads that, I, I don't want them to take lightly, you know, the COVID concern. And as we get through the summer and each program comes, you know, is coming up next week per se. You know, in the reminder email that goes to participants, there will be specific COVID protocols for each of those. So there should be no surprises and all expectations are out front. Thanks.
Thanks, Jason. Anybody else?
Mayor, I'd just like to thank the council for supporting the two lieutenant's position. About to echo council member Sarchat, but Lieutenant Clad will be an awesome asset. His efforts will be in our training operations. And then Lieutenant Dunham's efforts will be in the EMS sector. He's a paramedic. He's preseason, well-versed, and both will be great assets to the department and those administrative operations. So thank you for supporting them.
Anything else? Anybody?
One thing. Thank you to Chiefs and Mitchell for attending the Kiwanis meeting last night. Or last week, it was a small group of citizens here in town, but I think everyone appreciated their information and, and got a good perspective of the departments and understand the, the importance and roles of the departments with the community. And that the money, the tax dollars that go to our departments, all departments are very well-spent, well scrutinized, and everyone does a great job doing that. So I appreciate that.
So, so that reminds me, I was going to try and, I feel like I've talked enough, but Jeff was talking, reminded me of a couple of things, actually. Community Visiting had an implementation meeting and I, I know Jeff was there, I wasn't able to attend, but it sounded like some good progress was made. And then also went to and, and I think I officially joined the Arbor League. And so for, and I should have brought it up before Ken had given me a heads up on, on their kind of new drive to, to get some new members. And, and so they're going to have a few more regular meetings, but if we can put that out there for the Arbor League, that they are looking for some new members and also looking to do a, a tree drive here or a tree sale here in the fall, kind of as a, as a derecho follow along project in addition to all the other things that they do. So it's exciting that, that they haven't done all kinds of things. They're asked how many trees were planted and, and the estimates were, were high, but not specific. And a lot of those folks just do the work and don't always get credit for it. So but I think the main thing is, if he's interested, our league will be meeting here a couple of times coming up and you know, if you're looking for it. And they've also got a flyer that's circulating as well in terms of interest there.
Brad, one quick question. Are there any opportunities for families to participate in any tree planting? I have an eight-year-old that is passionate about trees and forests and would love to do such a thing, but I don't know if there's any, you know, capacity to get kids involved.
I can text you a guide's number if you want it.
But I also wanted to bring it up, you know, because again, it's like teaching your kids to give back. And that is something that, like I said, I know a particular eight-year-old who loves, loves the trees.
Well, in the spirit of asking for forgiveness rather than permission, that, that was my exact plan. Next week, one of the things they're doing, we're doing is, is taking off the wrapping around some of the trees at Kiwanis Park and a few other places. And I'm bringing my 11-year-old. So I, I didn't ask if that was okay. Maybe I, I should have and still maybe can, but I, I, I think there is. And, and I think there's a sort of a broad, you know, open approach to, to, to what they're doing. So
Yeah, I think my, my question was a little bit for personal reasons, but also, yeah, if there are opportunities like that that we can promote to families, I think.
I think, you know, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
And I don't, I, I, oh, sorry.
No, I'll, I'll follow up if, if you want to, since you may have a quicker hand. But I think they're, yeah, either way.
They used to, and I don't know, and I know last year, unfortunately, since the kids didn't go back to school, they do that annual planting at West Elementary for Arbor Day. And I know that's been a, one of his passions, so I'm hopeful that they're able to do that again. But along those lines, I know that he's worked with other people in town that if you have that interest, I promise you, he would take you up on, whether it's taking them somewhere or if you want to buy a tree. I, I know that he's passionate about that, so.
Excellent, thank you.
But all I will say regarding your eleven-year-old, be careful. I speak from being an eleven-year-old one time. And there's a reason that I kind of tire from trees sometimes, so.
You survived, didn't you?
Well, we'll talk about that offline. Anybody have anything else? If not, I'd take a motion to adjourn till, oh, three weeks, April twelfth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Motion carries. See you in three weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.